It's my privilege to serve as President of the Board. At this time, Mr. Irons will lead our invocation and our pledge allegiance will be led by Mr. Husbands if you would please stand.
Let us pray. We thank you for this wonderful day and for new opportunities we have for success. We thank you for a new school year that is about to begin. Be with our students, teachers, parents, administrators, and this board of trustees. Allow us to continue teaching, motivating, and inspiring our students to meet and even exceed all the educational goals that have been placed before them whereby our entire district will someday attain the level of exemplary. Lead and guide this board to make judicious decisions that benefit our students and our entire district. As I close, we thank you for blessing Dr. Mel Brown to have a successful open-heart surgery. We are happy to have him back with us. Amen.
Please join me in pledging our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our state flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you, Mr. Irons, and thank you, Mr. Husband. I want to take just a minute to welcome Dr. Mel Brown back as well. You'll notice he has not missed a meeting. He had his surgery a little over two weeks ago and is here with us, and so we are very glad. And he has asked if he could have a couple of minutes, and I will be glad to turn it over to you.
First of all, I want to address a rumor. It was bypass surgery and not a heart implant. And then the second thing, I would like to say thank you to the board and to administration and all the staff for all the cards, letters, and the visits that came my way while I was kind of laid up a little bit. And then probably the most unusual card I got while I was in the hospital was this one, which was given to me by CJ Haynes and Dr. Anne Smatter. And I want to know I have it in hiding now. I get better every day, so. But thank you all. I mean, I couldn't ask for more support than I have.
We are very glad that you are here tonight. We're going to move now to awards and recognition, and the first one is the Woodlands High School Class 5A Lone Star Cup winner.
I will introduce the principal of the Woodlands High School, Mr. Greg Colson, to introduce our special guests and our awards.
This is Sasser, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize the Woodlands High School for winning the 2008 Lone Star Cup Championship. As you know, the Lone Star Cup Championship is sponsored by the UIL and awards points for academic, fine art, performing art, and academic successes. This is the second time in the last three years we've been honored to receive this award, and it is a total school effort, community effort, that allows this to happen. We want to thank you as a board for supporting the extracurricular activities that our students participate in in such a fine fashion. We'd also like to recognize our parents and members of our community who do an outstanding job of supporting all of our extracurricular programs. At this time, I'd like to introduce our athletic coordinator and head football coach, Mark Schmidt, who will introduce our coaches who are with us tonight.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for allowing us to do the things that we love to do the most, and that's work with kids. Have a great group of men and women here tonight that I'd like to introduce. Our first gentleman is Kent Kirchner, our head swimming coach. Dale Reed, our head basketball coach. Reeve Murhai, our head tennis coach. Steve Keberry, golf coach. Joaquin Batista, wrestling. Noel Hansen, girls' track and cross-country. Richard Jorgensen, softball. Ron Eastman, baseball. Hans Kleinschmidt, boy soccer. Dana Bruton, girls' basketball. Adina Graves, girls' soccer. Thank you, and we are extremely proud to represent the Conroe Independent School District as the Lone Star Cup Champions. Thank you.
On behalf of the CISD School Board as well as Dr. Stockton and administrators, it's a great pleasure to stand before you this evening. And I think what's incredible, too, for us to realize that they received a total of 143 points. The second was 99.5, and so that speaks very highly of all of you this evening and the young people that you brought to this level. The other is not only were the sports incredible, but also swimming and diving, soccer, and track and field were recognized as sports that went above and beyond. And some of you may have seen in July, the Chronicle had an article in the paper that said their cup runneth over that recognizes the quality of not only athletic but also academic championships at the Woodlands High School. And with that, the Conroe Independent School District recognizes the Woodlands High School, recipient of the 2008 UIL Lone Star Cup, August 19, 2008. Congratulations. And I think the board would like to applaud and shake each one of your hands if we could turn around and start with Dr. Stockton or Star Tab.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Pam. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another special group that we would like to recognize this evening, and that is the 2008 Facilities Planning Committee.
It's my pleasure at this time to recognize Dr. Jean Stewart, who is going to introduce our special recipients tonight.
Thank you, President Sasser, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It is just a distinct honor this evening to be able to present to you the 2008 Facilities Planning Committee for the Conroe Independent School District. As you know, there's 15 members from our community that were selected to represent all the attendance zones of our district, and they began their service back in October of 2007 and worked diligently for the next three to four months in their work, which involved the analysis of our demographic information, the physical assessment of all of our district's facilities, and a detailed analysis of the projected enrollment growth. All of their work was focused on bringing to you the conclusions and recommendations of their work, and they were presented on January 15th and were followed by the successful passage of the 2008 bond referendum. The members of this committee were dedicated to their responsibilities and unselfishly gave of their time to our district and our district's children. At this time, we would like to introduce each one of them and present to them a symbol of our appreciation for their dedication to our district.
I just want to say a word of thanks also on behalf of the board. We know the number of hours and the time commitment this was and the mounds of information that you went through, and I hope that you will be very pleased as the construction comes along and you see all of the projects that you brought forward to us. So, thank you so much for giving of your time and service to the children of our district.
At this time, as I call your name, if you'd come forward, Laura Davis, she's here, Andy Dill, Ryan Fowler, Doris Goldman, John Hinnigan, Mary Lee Kerr, and I believe that Nell de Blair. I believe that Mr. Michaels is going to say a few words on behalf of the committee.
Dr. Stewart, Ms. Sasser, and all aboard, we just thank you for the opportunity to have volunteered our time and our efforts. As Dan Cox showed us earlier tonight, one of the truly fulfilling aspects of being a volunteer for the Conroe Independent School District is the wise and very fine use of the funds that we propose to be spent is done. We saw that we got a complete school being built from your wise choices and good use of funds. And in addition to all the work that was done by this committee in determining what the needs were and coming up with a proposed funding for the bond, a second committee, which was known as Parents Advocating Stellar Schools, was formed. Most all of the members of the Facility Planning Committee were also members of that committee, the PASS committee. This committee promoted the bond that was ultimately passed by the voters of our district. And in the process of raising funds to promote the bond, we raised more than it took. And as a result of that, the committee tonight would like to present to the Conroe Independent School District Education Foundation, which we know and understand is a separate entity and a separate organization from CISD. But we'd like to present them a check of the unused funds in excess of $9,000 to be used for scholarships by the CISD Education Foundation. And I'd like to particularly thank Nell de Blair, who is a seminal force in the CISD Education Foundation. Now, thank you for putting that together and your leadership in that, and it's our pleasure to be able to help support that program as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all did a good job.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you again. I miss serving green beans. Good to see you, sir. Always. Thank you, Mark. You look like Green Sergeant. I figured you knew that it's a different thing. Great.
I know. This is one.
The next portion of our agenda is set aside for citizen participation. Madam Secretary, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item three, a rather lengthy consent agenda this time, but you've had it for several days now. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Move the approval.
I have a motion to second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Item four on our agenda, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Stockton?
We have Dr. Gibson and Ms. Drummond here to present the summer school report. We've had a busy summer, and I think you'll be excited about the results we've had.
Good evening, Mrs. Sasser, board members, Dr. Stockton. Mrs. Drummond and I would like to share with you some highlights from our summer programs. We had a very busy summer, and of course, in the educational world, with our teachers coming back, yesterday's summer is over. We had several programs that our students enjoyed. One was a SMART program. This program is offered to first graders, first through sixth grade. This is a voluntary program. This program is designed to accelerate the skill development of our students in the areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. This was held at Oak Ridge Elementary, and our summer school principal was Tammy Eldridge. I'd like to mention that in our summer school programs, our assistant principals have the opportunity to be summer school principals, and this gives them opportunities to highlight and showcase their leadership skills. 102 students attended from grades one through six. We had our Title I program, again, serviced first through sixth grade. The purpose of the Title I program is to strengthen the academic skills in the areas of reading, writing, math, and science. We had four campuses that served our students. We served approximately 503 students at four different campuses, and our summer school principals were Amy Busby, Tammy Eldridge, Jamie Bone, and Carolyn King. We held our bilingual program for pre-K, K, and first, and our bilingual summer school program is actually mandated by federal law for pre-K and K, and we extend that program to our first graders. We had a record-breaking 690 students attend at four different campuses. We introduced this program this year as a pilot program. This program was designed, the Academic Intervention Model, or AIM, was designed for our third, fourth, fifth, or sixth graders. This program was designed for students that passed the tax assessment, but they may not have made their 70% passing in order to be promoted to the next grade level. We designed this so that we could come in and work with those students. It was voluntary on the parent's part. It was tuition-based. Thirteen students came, and thirteen students were promoted to the next grade level. It's a very successful pilot, and we hope to extend this next summer. We had our customary camp tax program, which is a very intensive reading and math intervention program for our third and fifth grade students who have to take the tax test for the third administration. We had 46 third-grade reading students that attended, 144 fifth-grade math students, and 155 fifth-grade reading students, and the program was held at three different campuses. Here we have the results of the third administration only in third and fifth grade. And I do want to take a moment to just give you some background information because this was a transitional year. We introduced this year a test called the Tax Accommodated, and this test took the place of the former SDAA, which was the State Developed Alternative Assessment. Both of these tests are designed for our special education students. The Tax Accommodated is an on-level grade test, and our special education students took this test. Many of them had not ever taken a tax test before. The Tax Accommodated test has the same level of difficulty as the Tax Test. It does not have any field questions. It has more white space on it, and it has a larger font. So, in fifth grade, Tax Accommodated is counted in our science grades. In grades three, five, in third and fifth grade reading, it is not counted this year, but it will be in 2010. So, we view this year as a baseline year. You can see in 2008, in third grade, we tested 47 students, and approximately 40% met the standard. In fifth grade reading, we tested 156 students. The third administration, and approximately 28% met the standard. And in 2008, we tested 143 students, and 30% met the standard. The other point I'd like to make is that our goal is to have 100% of our students meet the standard, and our goal is for that to happen the first time, the first time we give a tax test. That is when our students are the most successful. So, each time as this test is administered for the students, we have very intense interventions that are put in place. So, we feel very, very positive about the results. We continue in our curriculum areas to support our students and to find all the instructional strategies that will meet their needs. So, overall, what this looks like for our tax first, second, and third administration, if you remember that our accountability system is rated after the second administration, we have our, if we count all three, in 2008, we have a 97%. In fifth grade reading, we have a 95%, and in fifth grade mathematics, we have a 95%. So, we feel these scores are very strong, and we will continue to work towards 100% mastery.
How many more kids did we test this year?
We tested this year in third grade reading, we tested over 500, 535 students. And in fifth grade reading, we tested 331 additional students. And in fifth grade math, we tested about 330 more students. So, we are testing more students and maintaining, as you can see, a very comparable success rate.
On the, what do you call it?
Tax Accommodated.
Tax Accommodated, thank you. Big words thrown. The Tax Accommodated, I noticed that in '97, it seemed like it jumped way up from the previous year, but then kind of came back down. Have we looked at that to see what we did in '97 that worked so well that? One more back, I think.
This is the slide.
The 97%?
No, no, on back, there's a, where it had 47 on, yeah, right here. See, it was 38, 47, 30 on the fifth grade, and 31, 45, 28 on reading. I just wonder, we seem to have done something really good in 2007. I wondered if we've tried to isolate what that is.
Well, now, Mel, there's, Dr. Brown, there, in 2007, we actually, 2008, we tested, retested, or that students taking that third administration was less. It's 156 students versus 194. And in 2008, we're testing more students overall. We're testing included Tax Accommodated students, and also in fifth grade, a large number of our students were taking the tax test in English for the first time. So, there's a number of variables that play into that, but I can tell you percentage-wise that the largest number passed the first time. The second time, we're getting between 40 and 50% passing rate, and the third time, we're getting between 20 and 40% passing rate. So, you know, we are working diligently to raise that.
Oh, I'm not, I just, I mean, it just sort of, it just looked like there was a peak there, that we did something much better that year, and I was kind of wondering.
I think the answer to your question, you can see our summer school offerings have increased over the last couple of years because we're looking at different things to do to try to address the different needs of the children. So, we do analyze that, and we use the NOVA software, we use different programs during the summer. I think that's a good point. I think overall, I think Dr. Gibson makes a good point, too, that there's some other factors in here, but this is a really good story. But yes, how can we, how can we even continue to get better?
We had one more program, the Extended School Year Services, and this is for our special education students. It is, students are invited based on their ARD by the ARD Committee, and we had two sessions, and this was held at Reeves Elementary. This was our, this is a summary of our expenditures for our summer school programs. We use all of our funding sources, federal, state, and local, and our expenditures were And we did, we actually had 145 additional students that attended summer school this year from last year this time. They were served by 212 teachers and eight administrators.
Good evening, Mrs. Sasser, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. We're very excited about our summer school program for secondary. We had a variety of locations. This year, our district summer school for high school and junior high was held at Oak Ridge High School. We kind of share the wealth each summer and determine which high school will host the district summer school for our students who, for the most part, go to school at the Woodlands High School, the Woodlands College Park in Oak Ridge. But we also have students from Caney Creek, Conroe High, and Hawk attend this high school program. We had Principals Pam Grabsky and Nikki Watts at Oak Ridge. At Conroe High School, John Williams was our assistant principal. Pete Junior High, Ronnie Eichenberg, served as the principal. At Caney Creek and Morehead, our principal was Jeff Stickler. Robert Durheim was the principal for summer school at Washington Junior High, and Dr. Steve Meeker helped us at the Juvenile Detention Center this summer. We also had Hawk Alternative High School. JJ AEP, last summer, our students that are in JJ AEP actually joined us at our district summer school. This summer, the county asked us, they said they had some money, would we mind if they hosted their own program? And we, of course, said, by all means, please do. So, that worked out very well.
Ms. Drummond, before you move forward, then, what is the difference between Conroe High School and Oak Ridge? You've all, both high schools.
Conroe High School typically will do their Plato program. They call it CHOOSE, and it's an intense credit recovery program. They also ran a Tax Academy there for math for their juniors and seniors. The types of programs that we had, you can kind of tell by this slide, we did have credit recovery courses at Oak Ridge. We ran our Tax Academy for seventh and eighth graders who needed to take the tax test for the third time. We ran that at Pete, Washington, Morehead, and at Oak Ridge. GED was at Hawk and at JDC. We had an ESL Institute for our newcomer students at Oak Ridge High School, Conroe High, and Caney Creek. We did have our academic preparation program at JJ AEP. Plato was actually offered at four of our high school campuses this summer, so students could make that choice, whether they went to Conroe High, Oak Ridge, Caney Creek, or College Park. Our extended program, Extended Services Program, was at Oak Ridge for secondary. High School Accelerated Courses were at Oak Ridge High School. Math Acceleration for incoming seventh and eighth graders was at Oak Ridge High School. Those two classes are Pre-Algebra for incoming seventh graders, which would put them one year ahead in math, and Algebra I for, wait a minute. I get, let me start over with that. Incoming eighth graders took Pre-Algebra. Incoming seventh graders took seventh-grade math so they could go into eighth-grade math. Okay? Science Tax Academy for 11th and 12th graders was at Pete, and I have some good news for you about that in just a little bit. Creek, or College Park. Our extended program, Extended Services Program was at Oak Ridge for secondary. High School Accelerated Courses were at Oak Ridge High School. Math Acceleration for incoming seventh and eighth graders was at Oak Ridge High School. Those two classes are pre-algebra for incoming seventh graders, which would put them one year ahead in math, and Algebra One for, wait a minute. I get, let me start over with that. Incoming eighth graders took pre-algebra. Incoming seventh graders took seventh grade math so they could go into eighth grade math. Okay? Science Tax Academy for eleventh and twelfth graders was at Pete, and I have some good news for you about that in just a little bit. These are our first-time credit offerings. These, our students take courses in half-credit increments. So, we had seven-hundred-and-thirty-point-five course offering, or courses taken. And you can see the courses that were offered. Some of them are two semester, some are one semester courses. We had thirty-four students in Algebra One. We had twelve students in Pre-Cal, Pre-AP. This is the first year that we've actually made that course. We also had twelve students in Spanish Two, which is the first year that we've made the course. And we had thirty-two students in our Dual Credit U.S. History, just so that you know what the interest is. And the interest is definitely growing. The summary, two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen students attended secondary summer school programs. We had twelve-hundred-and-forty-two students attend the main program. And as you can see through the list, the numbers of students that were at each of our different campuses. Approximately ninety-six percent of the high school courses taken were completed successfully. Again, seven-hundred-and-thirty-point-five initial high school credits were earned. Nine-hundred-and-seventy-three junior high students attended Tax Academy, but they weren't all in one place. Transportation was provided from regional hubs at elementary, intermediate, and junior high campuses. These are our tax results. Again, as, as Dr. Gibson explained, this is a benchmark year for us, the first year for our eighth graders to be able to take their test four, three times. These are the results from our third test administration. Eighth graders taking the reading test, the number was sixty-six, with twenty percent of those students meeting the standard. For math, we had two-hundred-and-seventy-one students taking the test, with twenty-six percent of those students meeting the standard. These are our tax results for eighth grade, and needless to say, we are delighted. It is the first year that we have the exemplary score in math for eighth grade students. So, we are very pleased, feel like everyone has worked very, very hard. Summer exit tax results, our students who have taken the tax test and not met the standard have an opportunity in the summer to take the test again. We had eighty-three students out of one-hundred-and-thirty students meet the standard for a sixty-four percent. In math, we had eighty-nine students out of two-hundred-and-eighty-one who took the test for thirty-two percent. One-hundred-and-nineteen students met the standard out of three-hundred-and-six in science at thirty-nine percent. And thirty-four students out of eighty-three for forty-one percent in social studies. I want to brag on our Science Tax Academy that we held at Pete Junior High. Cheryl Heim, our science coordinator, has been instrumental in helping get this started. This is the second year. We had sixty-nine students attend. Thirty-two of those students met the standard from going into that program. So, that was a forty-six percent passing rate. We're very pleased with that. Of the students who didn't meet the standard, sixty-five percent of those students increased their score by thirty-three points on average. So, very, very good. And if you will remember, I think I told you at a previous board meeting, that this year, at this Science Academy, if the students needed a credit recovery, half-credit in science, if they met the attendance requirement to go to the Tax Academy and they passed the test, the schools would award them that half-credit in science. And we had twelve students who actually earned a half-credit of science this summer as well. So, kudos to Cheryl Heim and the teachers who have put this program together. And we're actually talking to Cindy Sellers to try to have a program for math next summer. Financial summary, three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars is paid in salaries, supplies, printing, and materials. We collected two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and fifty cents in tuition. Our staffing summary, as you can see, we had a good number of people working in our summer programs. We had two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen secondary students in seven locations with a hundred-and-seventy-six staff members. We had eight-hundred-and-sixty-three more students this summer than we did last year. We attribute that to our student success initiative in eighth grade, of course, but also four-by-four curriculum requirements are causing our students to know that they have opportunities in the summer to take courses for initial credit. And that's becoming more and more popular. So, very, very pleased, think it was a great success. We actually had, I think Dr. Heinz told me, over four thousand total students with elementary and secondary in our summer school program.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson and Ms. Drummond. It goes without saying, I think it's been a very busy summer in CISD. And our thanks to all those administrators and staff and teachers and, and to the students who took advantage of those programs. So, we appreciate that. We're gonna move on to item five A, Dr. Stockton, the naming of the music building.
Five A's and naming the music building at Conroe High School. I want Dr. Stewart to come forth and bring that item.
This evening, I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to present to you this item. The Conroe High School site-based decision-making team has made a recommendation to the district level planning and decision-making committee. And that recommendation was that their new music building be named after Ralph Rowe. Mr. Rowe was the band director at Conroe High School for over twenty, I think for twenty years, and was just an incredible director, quite an inspiration to the students at that, at that school, and set a lot of traditions that are still there at the school and made that, that band the, the program that it is today. So, there's a lot of, of community support for this. So, in their recommendation to the district level, we met in July, and it was unanimously approved to bring forward that recommendation to you as the Board of Trustees to make that decision. And I think that Mr. Burns has a mock-up of what that would look like.
He has it on.
See that? Isn't it beautiful? So, that would be what it would look like if, if that were your decision. This evening, this is, is for your information, so.
I'd like to add, you may have seen in the newspaper that the entire Conroe High Band made a trip over to Mr. Rowe's house recently. It was on the front page of the paper. Very, very touching picture.
And with the, with the board's approval, the, if I can get a motion because of some health issues that Mr. Rowe is facing, I would like to waive the time period. We should vote on this in September, but if, with the board's pleasure, I would like to go ahead and vote on this item this evening if we could please.
And move the way, move the way of the policy.
Okay, the motion is second, that we waive the policy and name the music building at Conroe High School after Mr. Ralph Rowe. Any comments or discussions? I just want to comment, I think, I know they were planning on being here, there are several of his former students here. Would you all mind standing so that we can recognize you? Thank you so, so much for coming. And if there aren't any other questions or comments, we'll take a vote. And for Dr. Brown this evening, we're gonna do voice votes, spares. So, all in favor, if you would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
I'd like to abstain.
Question carries, and we are delighted to have this music building have Mr. Rowe's name on it. He is a sweetheart. Yes.
Vote to move. First.
I put it all in one motion.
Oh, okay, it's all in one motion.
Yeah. Is that okay?
It's fine with me, you're the president.
Can I add too, that, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. I know Conroe High School is planning on having a ceremony that they'll announce in the near future. And we will also have for Mr. Rowe and his family, a nice plaque that, that signifies this honor. Thank you.
Item five B, Dr. Stockton.
Five B is for the approval of the GMP for San Jacinto Elementary School. Mr. Burns is, is here tonight.
And Mr. Burns, before you start, you kind of sneaked something in on us as board members, and we didn't get to officially say congratulations and best wishes on your recent marriage.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mel.
I'd like to comment, I didn't have any cake.
I didn't either. All right, you didn't. We're, excuse me, rest of the board to approve the GMP statement about Brookstone construction in the amount of eight million, seven, one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This will provide for a, this is rendering in front of the building. And this is coming around the, the new drive, queuing lane to get the cars off thirteen, fourteen. Little safety issue there. This is a kind of a site plan, which also includes clearing the playground further to the north, because we're gonna be taking up some existing playgrounds, all existing playgrounds have to be relocated and a little bit more of the area cleared. Now, this is a floor plan, a proposed building addition. It's seventeen new classrooms, the area in blue is some renovated areas. It'd be a total of seventeen new plus about two to three more spaces, plus a new library. So, now, the eight hundred, the eight B seven seventy-one also includes the campus improvements that were approved in the two thousand and eight bond referendum. What we're trying to do is when we hit a campus with an addition or whatever, we're trying to pick up all the campus improvements at one time so we don't disrupt the campus at one time and not come back next year and disrupt them again.
We did a similar type project at Armstrong. We did a lot of different things at one time.
So, we're asking the board for that approval tonight.
Bobby, could you go back one slide, please? I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more. The FM thirteen fourteen, as you know, we've had some concerns about the traffic on that. So, I, I just wanna comment, I know Chris Heinz was instrumental in this, to the design of the, of the drive to get people to the best of our ability off thirteen fourteen. That gives a large queuing area, which we think is really important.
I have one question about the cafeteria. Could you explain again, how many it'll seat? How many lunches it will take to get done? And how many lunches do our normal, do most of our, there's, there's no such thing as normal when you have fifty campuses, but at normal elementary lunch periods, are there three or four or eight or whatever?
Typically, and I'll let Kathy Gibson or Jean jump in if they need to, but typically, your elementaries have five lunches, maybe six. They all run around the same times. The cafeteria at San Jacinto, I believe, has capacity for two-hundred-and-eighty kids, two-hundred-and-eighty students. So, to give you an idea, they run five lunches. They start at eleven oh five and end at twelve forty. The, they have capacity now to put more kids in the lunches, but the five is, seems to be typical for the elementaries.
So, they have four lunches at this point?
They have, they have five lunches because they do some overlapping, I believe.
So, with the, oh, I'm sorry, John.
And we're increasing by how many kids?
Capacity currently is five hundred, and the capacity will be eight-hundred-and-fifty.
So, we're, we're increasing by three-hundred-and-fifty kids?
Right.
And we already have five lunches?
We have five lunches.
And, and so, that's seventy kids per lunch?
We have, we, we, we have, they have five lunch periods, that's by their choice. They can have more if they want.
Sure.
We have campuses that have similar size, that have similar cafeteria capacity. The capacity of the caf, of the cafeteria is, meets all TEA regulations. She begins her lunch period at eleven-ten, she finishes at twelve forty. That is comparable to many of our other campuses.
So, so basically, what I'm here to understand is y'all are recommending it without the alternate?
Well, you know, it's, the, if you add the additional space, it's, it's not going to allow them, it's, it's not gonna impact our lunches because they choose to have five lunches based on the grade levels. What it would do is give, give the kids more room during PE to, to play. And that's, you know, that, we certainly have a value on that.
My question is, would that have to do with all the additional requirements for physical education? Would that, with the, not using the multipurpose thing for serving meals, would that not enhance our ability, capability of addressing the PE issue that we got?
If we weren't serving lunch in this facility?
Yeah, if we weren't serving lunch there, we could.
Well, yes, yes. But the additional space is not an additional lunch space, it's, it's additional space in the lunch room. So, the benefit would be in the PE.
Okay.
And I had misunderstood, I thought if we expanded the cafeteria, that they would be able to start lunch later, but they were always, rather than starting ten thirty, but they were always starting at eleven-ten.
Right, it really doesn't impact the lunch when we start lunch.
Most of our campuses begin at eleven.
Well, that's what I thought, but I thought for some reason this campus started at ten forty.
Pardon me?
For some reason, I thought this campus was gonna get earlier.
No, this, this campus is not. And, you know, it varies, some start at eleven, some, some start at eleven oh five. They, they all have a slightly different approach to it depending on the number of students and the number of grade levels at some of our schools. But it, and at the end of the day, it is currently comparable to our schools that are out there.
Am I misunderstanding?
But do, don't our other schools have more interior, for example, in the new Sam Houston, they have their own gymnasium?
Yes.
And my point is, if you, and I'm probably as conservative as they get, I don't wanna spend a half million dollars that we don't, or five fifty that we don't need to spend. But frankly, if you're going to make, this is a cheap new, cheaper than building a new campus in that area. And if you're gonna increase, virtually doubling the size of the campus, then if the lunch, even if it stays in the same period with the new PE requirements, I think you're, I mean, apples to apples, it's not there. Because I've been in that lunchroom and it doesn't compare with the new Ben Mala. I mean, it just doesn't compare in a way.
We have, we have, the new schools have a separate gymnasium, that's absolutely correct.
Why, why are we, why are you recommend, let's hear the other side, why are you recommending this without the alternate, alternate?
Because of the fact that they have capacity in their lunchroom to eat, and it's comparable to others, other campuses. But I will say that there's also some benefit to having more PE space too. But, but it does compare to other, other campuses that aren't the new campuses with a separate.
With all due respect, how can you say it's comparable, other than lunch area room-wise, if they don't have a standalone gym?
Well, it's comparable to the other schools that don't have a standalone gym.
That aren't as new.
But I don't know the number of those.
Sure, there, there's a good comparison. My real question's not about lunch. My real question's about the other purposes for the room, or the lack of having another room for the other purposes, whichever way you wanna look at it. Well, and I agree, we, we, we can't do them all at once, but when we're at the campus, what was a million-dollar gym becomes five fifty, or I, I don't know what the number is, maybe it's only six fifty if we send a crew back out there. But with the new requirements and so on and so forth, I just don't want us, I am in for saving the five fifty if, if administration thinks so. I just don't wanna have to send a crew back out there two years from now because they say we're not getting our PE in.
And, and the other, if the newer schools are having that space, why would we not do it at this school when we're there?
Well, we have other schools that, it's almost like we have two groups. We have groups of schools that use the cafeteria that. Well, we have other schools that, it's almost like we have two groups. We have groups of schools that use the cafeteria, that what has been practiced in many years.
I'm trying to start somewhere.
In others that, that are the new schools.
But, and we, and we just went through the, we just went through where the principals and administration went through each and every campus, did we not, Mr. Burns? And they decided what their, what their, what their needs list was, or their wants as it may be, and I'm not sure where this fell, this issue fell, but if, if it's cheaper to enlarge the cafeteria than it is to build a standalone gym while we're there, and need is a, a relative thing, I, I can.
Let me, let me jump back in, you know, that's why, if we're, you know, and our recommendation is to, um, was to keep the original recommendation, I guess, that's what we redundant. But, and that's based on cafeteria space, having enough room for the kids, and we have that. Now, there is value in having a larger P E place, there's value on that, and that, that's something certainly, we turn it down if you've approved it, no.
But, but the other thing, um. But the other thing, Mr. Cox, with the growth of our district and the number, I mean, if we're going to add twenty thousand more students, we've got to add all these other campuses, uh, I just hate to see us, uh, and we've got to start somewhere, we can't do every campus at the, I mean, while we're in there, we might, to me, it makes sense to accommodate that, we've got to meet all these new requirements and, uh, then let's pinch some pennies somewhere and, uh, do this while, while we're there so that we're saving.
So we have a recommendation and an alternative before you.
So, do I have a motion for the recommendation either as is or as alternate number one states?
I move, I move it including the alternate.
All right, we have a motion to include alternate one, which is the expansion of the cafeteria at San Jacinto as an additional cost to the GMP.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a second. Any other comments or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Cox, uh, half a million dollars, where is it going to come from if it's not in, uh?
You know, obviously, I can't stand here today and tell you what every project in the, in the two thousand eight bond referendum is going to end up costing. We've been lucky, we've been pleased so far because we were, we have been concerned about construction costs, and, and the early projects we've bid, we've come out okay on. If that trend continues, we clearly are, have contingency and, uh.
But it's the contingency.
Oh, it's, I can't tell you, it's substantial, I mean, we have, we, we have, uh, adequate funds. You, you'll recall in the last bond referendum, we added sixty-one rooms, uh, across the district, and we're able to do that, uh, that were not budgeted. So clearly, we have the, unless we run into some, uh, problems, we have the ability to do things here and there, but I think you need, you need to do it with caution, knowing that this is early in the process, and if we do this on a regular basis, we could get ourselves in trouble. I don't see a half a million dollars at this point being a problem, but if we were to do this on every, you know, regularly, it could become a problem.
And I think you'll see too, in a, in a minute, you'll see a GMP that, uh, that came in under, so, you know.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of, um, the GMP with the addition of the alternate one for the expansion of the cafeteria at San Jacinto Elementary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Dr. Stockton?
Item C is the GMP for College Park High School addition and renovations and the district police facility and campus improvements at Knox Junior High School. Mr. Burns?
Um, we're asking the board to approve the GMP submitted by Marshall Construction Company in the amount of twenty-three million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty. Uh, this will include a, a new ninety-two thousand square foot addition to the, uh, College Park. It will include a new gym, uh, five science classrooms, uh, fifteen general purpose classrooms, drama, wrestling, and weight room expansion. Uh, also in its bid, it includes all the campus improvements, it was a hundred and, the two oh eight bond for one point six million for Knox Junior High, and a new police station that was in the bond referendum, uh, approximately fourteen thousand square feet, which will be built on the, um, one hundred eighty-six acre site. Now, this particular bid, as Dr. Stockton mentioned, came in below budget, and we're able to, at this time, uh, bring on the police station and the Knox, uh, on this project and still stay within budget.
Would you explain how, um, why you think it came in under budget?
Well, two things have happened. Uh, Marshall, who was the contractor on York Junior High, Tom Coffin Media, and now building Flex eleven, has a group, a team of subcontractors and suppliers that he wants to maintain. They worked very hard, Mr. Marshall, to bring in the good prices. They know that Junior High, which they will be building in another year, uh, will be starting on Longmire, so they're going to kind of follow the same, same group all the way through, so they're giving some price points. During the design, um, when we were doing conceptual bond planning, um, I've had this thing originally at a hundred and five thousand square feet, it'd come in at ninety-two, about, working with administrators that's on the site and P B K designers, they were able to realign a few things, save some square foot, which also helped save some of the costs. But between the two, uh, Marshall probably being the largest, uh, we've, uh, picked up about a four million dollar plus. And by bringing these projects forward now, we're going to save a possible inflate, construction inflation further down the line on these, on these other projects.
I have a question, Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Um, can you estimate, uh, how much it will cost if we were to consider building a ninth grade campus for College Park?
Well, it's about the same thing as a junior high school, very similar.
Which is what?
About twenty-two million dollars.
Twenty-two million?
And how, and how much of this approval is the College Park addition?
Uh, nineteen million, uh, two hundred fifty thousand.
So, so nineteen million for this improvement?
I think the numbers that he's giving you are just the construction costs. You, you need to add another six million or so on top of that.
For land.
The land furnishings and everything else, so.
Okay.
What's twenty-six million is really thirty-two million.
Okay.
But this land we already have, right? Or not?
Not for.
You're talking about, you're talking about.
Come on, nine grade campus.
Oh, okay, okay. But, and the same token, uh, the addition to College Park does not have the furnishings in, in this number.
No, but it does not.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
That would go as well, yeah.
My question is, 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 I know it would cost more, but why is it a good thing for four of our campuses to have a ninth grade, four of our high?
I don't think that's an issue for Mr. Burns, to be honest with you.
Well, it, it would, I, I understand, but, uh, it is an issue before I vote approval for this.
Yeah, the, uh, the issue when, going back to the planning committee, was we need a capacity for about six hundred kids, roughly. So that's where, um, that's where the addition came to for, for, uh, College Park. Um, during the planning process, the, uh, the, the facility planning committee looked at ideas, and we didn't talk necessarily about a ninth grade campus because we've traditionally looked at ninth grade campuses when our schools got three thousand kids or so. For instance, we don't have a ninth grade campus at Morehead, or at, at Candy Creek. Um, would we have one additionally, eventually, maybe, if we grow and grow and grow? So that, that's, that's where we are today, the, the ninth grade campus issue, um, I can tell you the folks at College Park are very excited about this potential addition.
Uh, let me ask this, uh, how many, roughly how many kids do we have in freshman class at, uh, College Park? Six hun, someone say six hun?
Yeah, it's six.
Six fifty?
So the school capacity right now for fall two thousand and eight is what? Twenty-five?
Probably, no, probably tw, what'd you say, Chris, twenty-two?
I thought it was twenty-four, okay.
We have twenty-six in enrollment, um, projected enrollment for the fall.
And the capacity's twenty-two hundred, did you say?
Let me ask a question that's been asked of me and I, uh, so I can get a public answer. Uh, Bart, is, you know, we moved the, uh, academy from Oak Ridge over there because we had the space. What would happen if we, I mean, and I don't even know whether we have another place, Bart, but, I mean, how, how much is the academy impacting that, uh, uh, population there? If the academy wasn't in, basically, if the academy wasn't in there, would we have enough space without any addition? Okay, but if you put the academy somewhere else, some of those kids from College Park would be going somewhere else, so how many are in the academy? So, eighty College Parks, roughly, two hundred, wouldn't you say a hundred and fifty other? Okay. So that wouldn't.
My, my, my question is this, okay, we built a twenty-five hundred student high school. Maybe it's twenty-four, maybe it's twenty-six, without portables. I'll go with whatever the number is y'all want to go with, but now we turn around and spend money to en, enlarge it, and albeit, we didn't know, uh, we never know about growth and so on and so forth, but fundamentally, we believe in the concept of separating ninth grader. Uh, we have to, or we would have added on to Woodlands, could have added on to Conroe High School, and I, I kind of disagree, we in effect moved the junior high at Candy Creek to basically make Morehead, which albeit attached, a, a separate campus, now they're not dividing yet this year, is that correct? But eventually, as they grow, I just want to understand why it should be different at this school? If it's, if it's money versus the right thing to do, or is it, is it six one-way, half a dozen of enough?
Well, I, my, my answer would be it's, you know, I think there's benefits to have a ninth grade campus, I think there's benefits to have a ninth grade on the campus. It depends on how it's set up. Um, I think when you get larger campuses, there's definite benefit to have ninth grade off the campus. Um, you know, you can go either way on that. I, I think the issue with this building is we have a, a functionable capacity of about twenty-two hundred, and we have twenty-six hundred kids there, and we're going to add a couple hundred more kids there. So what do you do with that smaller group of kids? You know, does it, does it, would it even support a ninth grade campus? Um, and then the issue of, of where would you put that ninth grade campus? Lots of issues that just weren't, people weren't talking about those types of issues. Uh, but they were talking about having room for the kids that are there, um, and having the support facility within that.
I have a question on, on the same for College Park, if I, I recall, it's, uh, very compact and a very small, um, acreage. Where would all of this addition, uh, go, is like parking or athletic fields, things like that?
Addition, but most of, there's a green, uh, area to the east.
I'm sorry?
Park line in the building, there's a grass area, most of the gymnasium, which is one of the largest pieces, sits right there, not taking any parking space. This is too square, structure of the cars all on, uh, very, there'll be some impact in the back in that grass here. Very little impact.
Was it the last, last month that the board saw the?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember, I apologize.
Behind the, um, commons area.
As you walk in the front?
Yeah.
The common there is the back and those, yeah, okay.
We're not, we're not impacting too much of the drive of the park. Hope that is within the compound and racks.
How many stores would be, two, three? Three?
Two.
Two.
Dr. Stockton, one last question now, on, uh, when Pete converts to a ninth grade campus and we build a new junior high?
Yes.
Uh, what is the capacity as a ninth grade campus at, at Pete?
Oh.
Will it change any from the junior high to that level?
It may change a little bit because we go to renovation and, and do some things with the science rooms.
But, but roughly?
Roughly, it was a little bit of that, but something.
And, and how many freshmen are we expecting to have the year that open, from Conroe High without a rezone? So, so there, there is, is not room for a rezone in any way, form, or fashion to correct this issue? I mean, I mean, because, you know, because Conroe's growing also, I realize that, but, I, I mean, from a ninth grade campus standpoint, it could take some of it.
Space.
Very good. You've answered my questions. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just think that with the success that we've had with ninth grade campuses, um, having the freshmen have their own campus, I, I think has been, from an emotional standpoint, from a maturity standpoint, I think it, it's, it's been a winner for us, I mean, really, uh, back when we were even considering this, it noticed that freshmen were having emotional problems, maturity problems, even suicide, uh, so.
Well, let me, uh, I'm playing both sides of this thing, so let me raise a couple of questions. One, do we have enough students, freshman students, for an, an eighth grade campus? And then the second issue that, uh, I know when you build a jail or a detention center, uh, you recapture, I mean, what, what you spend on the building, you spend again within five years on operational costs, uh, because you've got, you're adding a principal, you're adding assistant principals and those kind of things. Uh, so, uh, you know, how much more are we talking about to spend to get a ninth grade campus per student versus the issue of, uh, expanding? Now, I know I'm jumping back and forth because I'm, uh, kind of unsure myself how I'm going on, on this.
One thing that you made it clear to me in our discussions here today is that the size of the Woodlands in Conroe and Oak Ridge specifically dictates separating one of the grades. Whereas a six hundred increase at College Park does not make it unmanaged. Is that a correct statement? Whether it's a good thing or a bad thing to have the ninth graders there, the size of that campus for the administrative team, plus or minus the new teachers required, or maybe one new assistant principal, it doesn't change the capacity. But when you go from four to five thousand kids, that becomes a whole nother.
Right.
Event.
I think that's.
And, and six hundred more added to twenty-two hundred more is twenty-eight, and that's still way smaller than our other campuses, so that's why it can work there. Is that what I'm understanding you to say?
One, one more time, how many freshmen would there be at?
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
That's fifteen.
Okay, so which would be about half a page.
What are you projecting in two or three years as far as incoming freshmen? So it stays pretty consistent.
I think our predictions go out to twenty-eight something.
Well, you had, uh, if I may, Dr. Stockton said something about, uh, the, um, staff faculty at, uh, College Park, we're very excited, uh, would you, um, share that?
Well, I, I think the, the feedback, and I've talked to Mr. Merle about this, um, on a couple of different occasions, uh, and I gave all the bond presentations, um, you can imagine, and heard, heard nothing about anything like a ninth grade campus, uh, I think people like to be there. I, I think the folks are real excited, I think the voters were excited about the proposal. The question I would get, that I got was, hey, we just built a new school, why are we adding on to it? And, and I talked about the growth, and that's the last question I would get about it. Um, but I think, I think if the faculty was here, they'd be very excited, and, of course, part of that is because the school's been so successful and it's like to be there and everything. But I do think with the numbers, twenty-eight hundred or, or those numbers, they're about, they can do some things for freshmen and address Mr. Iron's concern, and Mr. Husbands is right, when you get to a certain mass, it's very difficult to do that.
But I have one other, so the size of, uh, the acreage at College Park is much smaller than either campuses, is not that, not a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
So by adding on, it, uh, for parking, for things like that, it's going to increase in students, um, what, 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 how does that play out?
Well, mo, most of the, most of the part we're going to build on right now is behind the building. It's going to impact some of the parking, um, so, but I think, I think as far as. But I think, I think as far as ratios concerned, they still look pretty good from a ratio standpoint. So, I, I don't have that information.
No, I know, I did.
Though we were surprised when we looked at it, as far as the impact it's going to have on, pleasantly surprised on the rest of the area.
Motion has been made that we approve the GMP for College Park, the district police facility and the campus improvements. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Um, Dr. Stockton, uh, item B.
Our next GMP is Conroe High School addition, uh, Mr. Burns.
Okay. We're asking the board to approve the, uh, the bid that's submitted by Ellisor Constructors in the amount of twelve million, three hundred thousand dollars for the additions and renovations for Conroe High School. Uh, this will include a new front entry, a new, uh, connecting link between the two gyms with lobby. Uh, renovate the auditorium entirely, including sound system, lighting and lighting systems. Uh, include repainting and reflooring of the main building and the annex across the street.
Any, any changes in the project, scope of the project? Because you, you went over the basics, but there were several other things in there.
Oh, yes. Uh, we, we're putting in new doors in the, in the main.
No, 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 anything taken out? That's, that was my only, my, my only reason for asking that versus the other projects is fifteen-six to twelve-three is pretty good, Bobby. Doing a great job.
Well, there was nothing taken out of Conroe High School. In fact, uh, this, uh, we've already, if you remember, the board approved a GMP to Ellisor, uh, about a month or so ago, a month ago, for some, for about two hundred thousand dollars, to do some paving over Conroe High, uh, which is now complete. Uh, we're waiting for, wait, we're waiting to wait to try it. That was part of the original budget for the Conroe High campus improvement.
Move the approval.
Eight items on campus improvements for Conroe High.
Second.
This, this number includes the fifty-eight items in the bond.
And that included the auditorium?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, one, one of the things Bobby shared with me when he made his estimate on this one, there were so many little parts that it was, these little, wanted to be safe on his estimate.
And I, I, I apologize, I haven't looked at the, the inside, but when we refigure that front, then that's going to be a more secure entry there, because right now it's.
It's totally secure, your view?
Great.
They'll have a set of gates out there by the auditorium doors, so they can't get, we're moving the reception out in, basically in that lobby.
In that lobby.
So that person or persons will be able to see both directions at any time.
Yes, I made a motion.
I have a motion for the, seconded. Motion is seconded to approve the GMP for Conroe High School addition. Um, you have a comments or questions?
Something wrong with this since we have with their playing out, I mean, that's not.
Well, probably wouldn't.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
I will make a comment while we're talking about that. We, uh, in, in about a week, you'll see fencing up in front, because we've got to do a construction area and, and Mr. Crowell and his administration are, they're working with, and Mr. Drummond are working with, um, the parents and teachers and everybody to train them where to go. Because we're going to start the school year, and then after about three days, four days, we're going to redirect them to come in a different area, we're going to move the front office. Uh, it's going to be a beautiful building, it's going to be a, you know, a year with lots of stuff going on in front. I think it's going to be well worth it.
Okay, um, five, yeah?
Uh, five E.
Five E.
Five E is the approval of the GMP for Tough and Dirchin Elementary additions. Uh, the board asked us to take another look at this, and, and we have, uh, continued to run the numbers. The, the challenge with this, um, area specifically Dirchin is we continue to get growth, and we're not sure, based on anybody's report, on where we are with hitting the, the peak number. Um, the, the bond issue had originally eight classrooms in it. We, we threw the idea out to put twelve classrooms at, at both and try to avoid, um, rezoning. We, we're not confident we can do that, because the, because we still may have to do, even if you had twelve classrooms, we still may have to do some rezoning at Dirchin. Um, so with that in mind, uh, and we do have some space at the lattice, um, uh, that we could utilize, um, with some rezoning. With that in mind, we're going to bring back the original eight classroom additions that were on the, um, on the bond issue. We have our principals here that are kind enough to be here tonight. And, um, then if that's approved, Dr. Stewart and her team will work on rezoning process, as, as you know, and I think Ms. Haynes suggested several years ago, lots of input, and we've been doing that. Um, she'll start that process in September, uh, if this is approved.
Second.
The motion is seconded that we approve the GMP for Caution Tough and Dirchin Elementary. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Doctor, item, five F.
Thank you. Uh, five F.
No giggling in the back.
Five F is, uh, the bond referendum update, and, and I'll make note that tonight you'll see a two thousand and four bond referendum for the, update for the last time. It's a milestone, so, Burns.
Uh, York Junior High, which is now, uh, complete, this is the front of the building. Uh, this is the, uh, the library, the commons area, the synergistic, uh, tech labs, uh, Tom Cox Intermediate.
Bobby, I'm sorry, I'm just catching up, would you go back a couple of slides? I can't let, I can't let this pass.
Okay. I figured you couldn't.
I don't know if you noticed, but one of the jokes is people are calling it the New York, and I said it's not called New York, and sure enough, we got a New York sign there.
New York sign.
We're not going to have a new and an old.
Okay. Well, I can do Anderson or Lamson. Okay, Tom Cox Intermediate, uh, is now complete, it's all charged up and ready to go. Happy campers here. Uh, this is some of the murals that have been painted on the building.
I want to interject, that, uh, at Tom Cox, um, the beaut- the buildings is beautiful. It's like, it's all like our other flex schools. Um, Ken Sharples is the principal there, and he just has done an amazing job coordinating, along with Mr. Cox and, and his art teacher, Mr. McDonald, Wayne McDonald. Wayne's painted all these, you're going to see several murals that are just incredible. Um, they've spent their summer up there, I went up there one, in San Storch's there. I went up there one summer and, and Ken had ten volunteers painting signs, I mean, it's just been great.
He did that at Vogel, too.
He did, yeah, it's just, it's just incredible.
Pardon me, can I ask, what is the mascot for Cox that we approved?
Timberwolves.
Timberwolves, thank you very much. I was trying to get there with, it just wasn't working for me.
Red dogs or something, yeah.
I was in the same genre.
Okay. Uh, this is the commons area.
And again, that's another thing that was painted on there. There you go.
Wow, leaving the path.
Library. Sports complex, uh, is, uh, the dedication, is, uh, this Sunday.
They've been putting that one in.
Ah, girl.
He got in the pool before me.
I haven't been in it.
Okay.
Who are this?
That's, I think that's Mr. Burns, Mr. Ballinger. I think Dr.
They don't have life jackets on, it can't be them.
When do they start practicing?
They start the first week of September, I believe.
They've been on some lifeguard, um, work down there the last few days. Um, but the building is, uh, very attractive and be ready for the dedication, um, on Sunday.
Think we can get the next Olympics, sir?
Not on, I hope so.
Bobby, if you could go back, um, I asked him to put the scoreboard, the scoreboards are up and, and just, and the board knows this, but we have entered, in an agreement with Daktronics, um, with our sponsorship, that we've been able to put scoreboards at both Morehead Stadium, Woodford Bank Stadium, and two in the auditorium, and provide a great, um, additional level of entertainment for our spectators. And the beauty of it is, it's no cost to our taxpayers, this is all by sponsor money. In fact, it, uh, the sales went so well that the district will, uh, receive approximately a hundred thousand dollars in revenue per year in addition to getting scoreboards. It's just been an incredible deal, it's the biggest one Daktronics has ever done of high school, uh, so we're very excited about it.
You know, we could put some more signs along the bottom of that, if that rate.
Well, I am going to wear a NASCAR jacket with just patches.
Okay. Uh, this is, I'm looking out through the press box on the blue field. That's scoreboard. Armstrong.
Can you back up just a little? Just Burns, I know you've been standing up there a long time, if you're going quick. We just wanted to admire all our sponsors.
And I, I will share with you too, you may have been up at the Morehead Stadium. Uh, Morehead Stadium also has, uh, Conroe Regional Medical Center on their, on their scoreboard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Armstrong Elementary, uh, we're still, uh, working to getting this together, it's going to be down to the wire. There was a lot of work went on this building, uh, during the summer. Which included, uh, new fire extinguisher system, new ceiling.
That's just unbelievable.
Uh, we, we could take a real good picture of the cafeteria because of, we have a lot of furniture stored in there, which will be starting being dispersed, uh, tomorrow to the classrooms. Uh, if you remember the, uh, this used to have the green tile on the walls and an old case, or some bunch of old casework right there, that's all been cleaned up. Uh, this is the cafeteria, kind of looking over the furniture.
This is the cafeteria, buddy. It looks great, look at it.
But it will come together. This is the library that they're putting in the countertops today, actually, and the carpet was finished up last night, or this morning, excuse me. Uh, this is the new classroom wing.
It'll be open on Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you moving, um, Mr. Your Sunday?
Sir?
Monday morning.
It's, uh, Monday morning? Because I know he's, uh, I called him to see if I could get a tour, and he doesn't have his new office yet there, and I was wondering if, uh...
You know, we, we are very fortunate, um, to not only have our planning and construction department, as we start the job, but we have got a custodial department that is so customer friendly. We've got teams ready to go Thursday, just teams of custodians, and they're going to work until it's ready to go.
They do, they do a Yoma's job on these buildings, particularly when we're running a little bit behind, or, or we're, like, during summertime, we may be doing seven to eight buildings while we're repainting and flooring. Those buildings have to be emptied and then brought back. So they do a tremendous job every year with their, kind of behind the scenes, but they're there, without them, there. Okay, Flex eleven, which actually would be the first part of two thousand and eight bond. Still parts oh-four, but we're going to call it two thousand and eight. Uh, it's about ten percent complete, uh, underground is in, slabs are being poured, slowed down the last week by rain.
This is our bonus school.
That's the bonus school. Flex twelve, which is the intermediate on the one eighty-six site. Uh, those large covers are the underground infrastructure storm lines for the entire, uh, site. Should be part of, which is part of this contract. Uh, the pad for Flex twelve is in place, plumbing is going in. Uh, Flex fourteen, uh, which, not part of this, uh, they are starting the pad on it, and, um, it's for dirt only, an infrastructure, so for all, all storm drains will be all tied together. Flex thirteen and Pearl Oaks. Um, they're starting their beams up here, it's been done. Uh, they're pampered by mud right now. See? Uh, Runyon, oh, this one's, is now complete. I don't know if you remember, but all these corridor walls were kind of a green color. Uh, if you remember, the restrooms were probably not showpieces, uh, they're a little bit better now. Uh, this is the office area. Uh, just looking down one of the corridors, the new doors. And that's it. Any questions?
Very nice work.
A very, very busy summer for planning and construction also. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Okay, to item agenda six, business and finance, um, item A, Dr. Stockton.
Uh, Mr. Cox is going to come and present the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine official school budget.
President Sasser, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. Uh, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the, adopt the resolution explaining the intent to fall short of proposed expenditure target established by the Commissioner of Education and approve the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine official school budget. As you know, we achieve excellent academic outcomes in a very cost-effective manner. However, we are not going to spend sixty-five percent of our budget on instruction, which is the target, uh, set this year, uh, that we all heard about for some time. And this is the first year that they've set the target that you, uh, should achieve that sixty-five percent spending on instruction. Uh, the resolution explains that the budget, uh, will not achieve the sixty-five percent target. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think that's any surprise, I still think we're doing a good job. I think most districts I've seen are adopting this bu- this resolution. Uh, I recommend, uh, that you adopt the resolution and approve the budget.
So moved. Motion's been made and seconded that we adopt the, um, board resolution and also the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine official school budget. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, it has to do with the arbitrary sixty-five percent, and I'd like to be on record to say, you know, unless they do something with transportation, those other areas, that we are so different about that we have to haul so many kids, so many... If you don't get the kids there, you can't educate them. And I think we need to, uh, kick that statement over to the, uh, our legislative, uh, committee and keep sending that message to, uh, the House and the Senate about, you know, these arbitrary numbers, can't do it if we can't get the kids there, so I mean.
Agree.
Other questions or comments? Aye, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, before we move on to the next item, I'd like to, uh, personally thank Darren Wright and the Stowers who are here tonight, who really did the work to put this budget.
It's fine if you do that, but just don't go through the budget presentation one more time.
I'm not going to do that. I will not do that.
Hey, um, item agenda, um, six B, Dr. Stockton?
Six B is two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine tax rate.
I recommend the Board of Trustees adopt a tax rate of one dollar and four cents for maintenance and operations and twenty-three cents for debt service per one hundred dollars of taxable valuation to fund the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine official school budget. Uh, the tax rate is required to fund the maintenance and operations and the debt service budgets for two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Uh, the resolution is attached, and I recommend that, uh, it be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded that we adopt the tax rate as presented by, um, Mr. Cox. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Stockton, item six C.
Six C is revisions to the four fifty-seven plan, Mr. Cox.
Yes, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the following changes to the four fifty-seven plan. Appoint First Financial Administrators, Inc., FFA, as the third-party administrators, uh, for the existing four fifty-seven plan. Replace the existing four fifty-seven plan document with the attached four fifty-seven deferred compensation master retirement plan document provided by First Financial. Add two life insurance company of the Southwest annuity products called Secure Plus Elite and Millennium to the existing investment options. Appoint First Financial Administrators as the exclusive agent for any continuing existing four fifty-seven plan investment options and the two new LSW options listed above. And provide Fidelity Investments Mutual Funds as an additional investment option, which will not be administered by FFA, but will be dealt with directly for, uh, Fidelity. Uh, this proposal was prepared by First Financial Administrators, Terry Brown, CJ Haynes, and myself, and I recommend that it be approved.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the following changes to the four fifty-seven plan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank Mr. Cox, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Haynes. I want to thank Mr. Cox, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Haynes, thank you very much for your input on this, and I think we have a good plan for employees.
I'd also like to introduce Mike Whitman with FFA, he's there, he's one of the representatives from FFA. I told him if, help me if I got into trouble, but since there were no questions, I want to.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. Item six D, Doctor Stockton.
I too would like to thank Ms. Haynes for your work on four fifty-seven, appreciate that. Financial reports.
President, since they've been working so hard on the budget and everything.
I agree, I agree.
I think, I think that Mr. Rice needs a pass tonight.
Yeah.
Rice, should we thank you? Thank you, thank you very much.
It wasn't near as good as your report.
Wait a minute, get back up here, we hadn't voted yet.
Thank you all very much for all your hard work, we appreciate it. We'll move on to the Human Resources Report, which is item seven, Agenda item seven A. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the Human Resources Report. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll move to legal.
Mrs. Gladys authorized notice proposing termination employment contract.
Doctor Stockton, Ms. Sasser, I'd like to throw actually both my items from the board's consideration this evening.
Then there being no other business during her motion to adjourn.
Probably out of order, but I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to again thank the facility planning committee, those of you who hung around, that's, you get extra. And also.
Do it again.
And some of you also were involved in the past committee, and I noticed Rita Wilson's in crowd, Rita, thank you for your support. Rita, thank you for your support, I know you're involved in the past committee. And I just want to say, at the eve here of the start of the school year, and at our assembly on Thursday, everybody in our district will hear that, I'm convinced the superintendent that we're ending the greatest year in our school district's history, based on our academic performance, based on our financial performance, based on a lot of different factors. But I think we're poised to have even a greater year next year, so with that, I just want to say that, too.
Thank you very much, we're excited and invite all of you to join us for the.